Under the direction of our green members, march. Are. Opened today is the United States of America, the State of the Republic, the State of the Constitution, of the Constitution, and of the Constitution.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor to be here. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Green, the senior army instructor of Bandy's High School. Please take your seats. On behalf of Dr. Chad Maynor, our principal, Bandy's High School, and Dr. Matt Stover, our superintendent, and of course, our great school board that we have here in the top county. It's an honor to be here tonight. As we did do this hopefully two to three times a year, the invitation of the school board, so you see what some of these great programs we have in the top county schools are doing. Tonight, I have with me Cadet Gavin Cook. She is a junior, soon to be a graduating senior year, graduated early. Going to be joining the United States Air Force as her dad is not to work on airplanes, but to become a loadmaster or a crew chief on one of their airplanes of the Air Force, such as the C-17 or the C-130 or the C-5 Galaxy. Sad, sad to see her leave early, but I'm glad to see her moving on and serving her country and continuing her education. She's playing a sufficient in shout of four years, three, Washington, California. Standing next to Cadet Gavin Cook is Cadet Larry Thacker. Larry Thacker is a junior at Bandy's High School. He is currently looking at, after his trip to Appalachian State, been on a mountain at the C-OSA. Taking in all that good mountain there, he's got a vehicle to drive to go from one to. See how his plans go in the future. Standing next to Cadet Suzola is Cadet Grayson Kenda, who's a sophomore off of Bandy's High School. All four of these young people, members of our real team. Grayson is known for his track. Plans on following his mother's career path and moving into that, if he will possibly merge. This is his current career plan, going into another, he's probably getting that direction. He's done very well this semester. Our battalion recently went down to Charlotte for a honorable flight over by the Queen City. On this flight, we were the lead element to honor the ninety-two veterans that went to Washington DC. One more walk through that. Two career walk. Get on. Then in the back, he's got the last siters, he's got some other cool things. I'll see down the street, well, some people Charles never heard of. Again, lines up Saturday evening to the holiday pleasure of the year of tonight. To a safe fall season. Forward, march.
Thank you Colonel Green and the Bandy's group for the final support here tonight. For members, at this time, I will seek approval of the minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting and also the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
And given to you free.
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of those minutes, the operation ahead.
Time I recognize Dr. Stover for adjustment and approval of your agenda. That was the. Any other adjustments? Policies, a new business nine that we discussed this morning.
Remove closed session at the end of the meeting. Do we need to delete that off there because we do need closed session, correct?
There, motion to. Prove the agenda. All in favor of the adjusted agenda. Favor, I'll recognize for superintendent's report.
All right, so tonight, I'm gonna start with our chief technology officer. Maybe you have seen, but Marty Sharp was recognized by a leading industry of technology, I call them gurus across the nation, as an all-star technology leader. And so, why is that a big deal? What does that mean for us common folk who don't understand technology? Well, to give you a good reference of what Marty and his department does is they're, they're ahead of the curve. What, when Hurricane Helene came through, we had water in our schools, power was out, but we had internet. And that's because of forward thinking, because of Marty. Ten years ago, redundancy was put in. We never had to worry about that. Right now, we have a bazillion devices compared to the number of technology folks we have. Every year, he comes up with a plan on paying for devices. And I don't know how they get it all done behind the scenes, but twenty-four days, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week is how they do it. So, in my opinion, this award is long overdue. So, Marty Sharp, we want to thank you tonight on behalf of myself and our Board of Education. Thank you to the Sharp family for allowing him to work all the time. Marty, congratulations, my friend. Oh, man, that's good stuff. All right, so we're gonna move into our employees of the month. Our first employee of the month is Ms. Shannon Plemmons, who is our administrator of the month. As you know, Ms. Plemmons and her staff have made a commitment to move into that new building. Under her leadership, it happened. I think mostly with smiles, but maybe some, some tears. But, but thanks to your leadership, it was as smooth as it could have been and still is. So, Ms. Plemmons, congratulations and thank you. Our next employee of the month comes from Oxford Elementary and probably the coolest kindergarten teacher-looking kindergarten teacher we got. If I was in kindergarten, I want to have Mr. Fleming. Mr. Fleming is an amazing kindergarten teacher with patience of Job and just loves kids and just is, just exceptional, dealing with challenges and problem solving. And for that, Mr. Fleming, we'd like to recognize you today. And Ms. Fry, thank you for being here. So, Mr. Fleming. One of the kids while we were there the other day asked if he got a haircut over the weekend. And Mr. Fleming said, no, I did not get a haircut over the weekend. That cracks me up. All right, and our, our classified employee of the month is from Mill Creek Middle School, and she is our new head custodian there. Been doing that about a year. But Mill Creek has just been spick and span from one end to the other. It was just perfect timing. When I went to go recognize her, I was leaving and she was out in the middle of the field getting trash. There is no trash anywhere on this campus. Everyone, I want to thank Mr. Everett for coming tonight to support our custodian of the month, Ms. Kim Daniels.
At this time, I will recognize our board attorney, Ms. Crystal Davis, for our public comments section.
We'll convene, is that mine? Okay. We'll convene the public comments section of the board meeting. As most of you are aware, the public, each person who has signed up will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Mr. Sharp has courteously put a three-minute clock on each screen and will notify you with a sound whenever the three minutes are up. We would ask that each speaker be respectful of audience members, that audience members be respectful of each speaker. And that, and when I call your name, actually, I'll have you come up and you will state your topic and then begin with your three-minute comment. So, first is Mary Slater. Her topic is buses. Ms. Slater? If you want to come around here to the podium. Yep.
My topic is, is the buses. Good evening. My name is Mary Slater. I am one of the forty-nine percent as of 2021 raising a grandchild. I would like to commend you for keeping students home on Friday, October the fourth. I would also like to bring to your attention an ongoing problem with buses. On October the third, there was a scramble to get children who didn't attend their homeschool from various schools they do attend to their homes. The conundrum our principal faced with the immediate release to the drop point was his students were at lunch or at Hickory High and had to be gathered quickly to be bused to the drop point. There was no email, robocall, text at that time to parents. Personally, I have found the bus system poor in the four years mine has attended high school. Some of our issues have been, we never knew to begin with, the bus numbers our child would be rotting. If the county bus didn't run, we were to drive eleven miles to and from school ourselves, each way. The bus left ours out at a deep drainage ditch, didn't stop or let out at Challenger instead of home. On October the third, I was picking up medication for my husband who was waiting surgery. I had left my phone at home. The streets were already flooding. My granddaughter called home only to say she needed to be picked up at Challenger. I had been out thirty minutes by the time I was told I needed to pick her up. Ten minutes after I did pick the pickup, I was notified of a release. As the weather was announced earlier in the week, I feel like the solution would have been to go viral. Virtual. Therefore, that also should have books to work out, knowing that the power goes out in some cases weeks or months. A school restarted October the seventh, mine stayed virtual as my husband had surgery. On October the eighth, we stood while our bus drove by. Turned, went into our development. We stood as the bus went around the block one more time. Did not stop. Again, another drive to school, leaving my husband at home ill. The following day, I had to fly down the bus waving, only to have the new bus driver ask if she was on his stop. In closing, I would implore you to make common sense decisions to keep students at home in the event of oncoming weather, so that they are not stranded without a parent. Thank you.
Isn't, isn't that? Isn't that interesting? Well, it's, it's actually coming through the stream. Yeah, it's coming through the stream. That's strange. Okay, y'all, I'm gonna mute this. There we go. All right, we may have to go without the noise for now. There it goes. All right. All right. We'll have to go without the noise.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Sparks. I have a few brief remarks. Something over fifty years ago, then Governor Jim Hunt decided that the Research Triangle Park would become a global center of biotechnology. Here we are fifty years later, that vision is realized and made more concrete every day. Based on the strength of the vision of Governor Hunt, Terry Sanford, and a few other forthright, forward-looking leaders from a long time ago, the decisions that we seem to be facing here are a little more day-to-day. I'm here to suggest that we focus on something a little more important. I've been coming to these meetings for about three years now. Over that time, what we've done is decided to retain Monday's Not Coming by Tiffany Jackson, Lolita by Vladimir Nabokov, Extremely Loud and Dangerous, Incredibly Close by Jonathan Safran Foer. We moved entirely from high school libraries, Out of Darkness by Ashley Hope Perez, A Court of Mist and Fury by Sarah J. Moss, A Court of Thorns and Roses by Sarah J. Moss. The restrictions have to do with parental permission and otherwise. We can say that we're not looking to ban books, that this is a barrier to students' access to diversity of opinions. I'll say that again. This is a barrier and an impingement on students' access to a diversity of views and opinions. It was renounced, it was announced not too long ago that Micron Technologies will be building a new facility in between Albany and Schenectady, New York. This facility will cost one hundred billion dollars. It's a semiconductor manufacturing facility. I'm here to suggest that such a vision and such a goal and such a project is not out of our grasp. We live in the center of the telecommunications universe. There are three major fiber optic communications manufacturers within a stone's throw of this building. Our students should be aspiring to careers in such places. Corning has recently inked a deal with Catawba Valley Community College to have a training center there. I suggested in fifty years, we could be looking at a literal silica valley in this area. This board has the responsibility of thinking that far ahead and implementing actions to implement that kind of vision. This is not a pipe dream. This is how it works. New York got the Micron job because twenty-five years ago, they said they would. What is our collective vision? Thank you.
I have provided an article from The Guardian for the board this evening, and I wanted to point out a few parts of this article that is about expenditures from public schools. It surveyed four hundred and sixty-seven public school superintendents across forty-six states, and it documented some things, such as the frequency with which both school board members and school superintendents have been called out as sexual predators, saying that it was very frightening, something that happened here in our primary. It talked about educators who've left the district and school staff who have left because they felt caught in the crosshairs of societal war. There was a school in a southern district that had debates over book bans that spent several hundred thousand dollars for additional security personnel, which we have done here after one of our students who was brave enough to speak to the school board was verbally accosted in our parking lot. There was a school in a western United States district that elected extremist school board members who were supported by Moms for Liberty, who were accusing the schools of indoctrinating kids about sexuality, and the district had to spend a hundred thousand dollars to hire armed plainclothes off-duty officers, half a million dollars in legal costs, and a total of one million dollars in staff hours responding to the conflict. These researchers found that an average district that experienced a low level of political conflict in the last year spent around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address both indirect and indirect costs, including staff turnover. Districts with a higher level of conflict face costs of more than eight hundred thousand dollars. The largest portion of that money came from the turnover costs of replacing staff members who left their jobs or retired early because of personal attacks or the broader demoralization of their school climate. Nationwide, these costs added up to three point two billion dollars. Two billion dollars would have hired an additional counselor or psychologist for every public high school in the United States. Their point in this article is that the political campaigns that the schools have been facing in recent years have been anything but normal, and that they have been driven by a small number of active individuals on social media or at school board meetings fueled by misinformation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Josh Stackleather. I present the Maiden Band Boosters. I'm one of the presidents for that organization. As you know, the people that make, people that make up the boosters are in fact parents. Their students participate in those programs, and we live and work in those communities. So, it's very important to us as parents to volunteer our time for these organizations. Some of these organizations, in fact, ours, are not really, I guess, blessed, so to speak, with, with that many volunteers or community givers. So, we, we struggle financially. One of our main financial bringers is a competition that we hold once a year at the Maiden High School with anywhere from twelve to twenty bands coming from all over the western part of the state. Quite literally, it is a large, the largest fundraiser that we have. We intake roughly twenty-one thousand dollars in profit. That is profit, not what we take in. So, it generates that, so what, three thousand? So it generates that, so what, 3,000, 4,000 people that come to this event? It's, it's a very big deal to us. As you well know, I'm sure each member on the board whom I've emailed and have seen through our community that this competition this year was canceled in the wake of some Hurricane Helene. We're supposed to have it September 28th. Of course, that didn't happen. We were told that Monday that the competition would be canceled due to a football game being moved to Saturday. Typically, football games are changed to Monday of the following week if they have to be rescheduled. However, this one was not. We were told we could not have the competition. Our contingency plan was to have it indoors, which we have done in the past, and that contingency plan was voted down. Thus, we lost $21,000 in profit for the year, for our organization. $35,000 goes to our new uniform fund. That's what we have to put, so 30% of our profit each year goes into this uniform fund to make up on the back end what we've expended over the past several years. So it's a big financial hit, and I won't go, I don't have a lot of time to go into our, our numbers, our, of our startup money that we have just to get into the competition, just to even have it, it's what, about $8,000, and we spent that this year. We lose that money until next year, if we get to have it next year. So, and also accordingly, so Saturday, there was a tarp laid out from the 40 to 40 line on the football field, covering it. Most bands, 1A, 2A, 3A bands, are gonna not even cover that 40 to 40 size with props and students, every, every, everything on the field, they're not gonna cover it. Saturday, they canceled the game because the field was too wet, yet at 2:30 that afternoon, the football team was out practicing on that field. Thank you for your time.
At this time, we will move to the consent item section of our agenda, and I'll recognize Dr. Stover.
Yes.
And board members, you have seen the consent items listed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion relative to approval of those consent items.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sigmund.
I'll second.
And second by Ms. T. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing all in favor of approval of the consent items as presented, signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we will move to the unfinished business section of our agenda, and I'll recognize Mr. Dan Moore for construction updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we've got four slides here of our progress at Maiden Elementary School. The cafeteria and kitchen are now fully functional, fully outfitted, and I know that the students and staff are enjoying that space. So we're very pleased with that progress. Are you?
It's okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm with you. There we go. Okay, all right. So the gym is being roughed in, and actually, it's much further along than that. The floor has been installed, and now we're looking to add the appropriate amounts of gym coat, it'll be painted, leechers will be installed. We're looking at probably mid-November for it to be fully finished. We've had some issue with getting the company in to make sure that the floor is complete, but we wanna obviously make sure that we do that well. Well, there's only four pictures, so I'm not sure. Okay, all right. So in, in, in summary. Perfectly fine. In summary, we feel like around mid-November, we will be fully complete at the new facility, and that will then trigger us beginning to demo the old building and begin the second phase of that project, which will be creation of the bus drive, the creation of the new playground on the upper part of that campus. So we're getting there, and I know that the faculty, staff, students, and community are very pleased with that space, and I'll be happy to answer any questions they may have.
Moore, has there been a discussion about a date for dedication, ribbon cutting?
We have talked about that, and I'll make sure that at our next construction meeting that we will finalize that. I know Ms. Flemmons has a plan, sort of a base date, and certainly what we want is for this to be done as well, but we'll make sure that we get that published as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thanks, sir. We will now move to the new business section of our agenda, and I recognize Assistant Superintendent Lee Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Excuse me, board members. Earlier today, each individual school presented their school improvement plan for the 2024, 2025 school year. I would ask for your approval of those plans this evening, with the exception of the four schools that we spoke about earlier today, Oxford, Murray, St. Sims Elementary, and River Bend, and we'll bring those plans to you in November with any community feedback that we receive.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and as Mr. Miller said, we did hear those presentations. It was very good to hear from each of the schools and the plans they have in place, and the hard work they have put into those. At this time, I'll entertain a motion relative to school improvement plans.
I make a motion that we accept this presentation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Richards, and simultaneous motion by Ms. Big and Dr. Barnett. Motion and second are on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the school improvement plans as presented, signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, approval of a resolution for the naming of the former Catawba County Schools Central Office Building, and I'll recognize Dr. Stover.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, members of the board. We do have the resolution drawn up for you for naming our curriculum instruction building after Glenn E. Barger, former superintendent, and as we discussed today, that we would plan on having that ceremony for him on Sunday, November 24th, at 2:00 p.m., and we are asking for your approval tonight on the resolution.
Dr. Stover, you have all heard the request. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
I second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I will say personally, having worked under Mr. Barger's leadership for a number of years, and Dr. Barnett also did, and a number of folks here, at one capacity or another, have worked with Mr. Barger, incredible individual who gave many years of service, and I think this is well deserved. So this time, all those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your hand. And thank you. And now, item number three, we will hear from Marty Sharp on approval of quotes for network switches.
Board chair, vice chair, members of the board, as discussed previously this, during our work session today, I bring two quotes in front of you for network switches. And if you recall, this first quote, for $260,578.06, will be fully funded. 80% of that funding will come from federal E-rate funds, and the remaining 20% of those funds will come from state funds provided to us from North Carolina. The second quote, and may I also say, there's only 23 switches listed here, so in order for us to get to that 29, we are looking at approval for $67,576.89 for the additional six switches, to make sure we provide equitable access for all of our schools, and these funds would come out of technology local and state funds.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. You have all heard Mr. Sharp's presentation this morning. You've now seen those quotes again, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the quotes to purchase switches from NWN that Mr. Sharp's presented.
Thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Richards. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of those quotes, signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you, sir. And again, I'll recognize Mr. Moore for four different items, beginning with the, excuse me, approval of change order for the Maiden Middle School roof replacement.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, and members of the board, Dr. Stover. This is the change order number one, the finalization of this project, the roof at Maiden Middle School. The amount that was left in retainage is $26,234.35. The final contract sum for this project is $704,465, excuse me, $704,465.65. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I do seek approval of change order number one to finalize that project.
Are there questions?
What is the warranty on this? Is it 20 years?
Duralast. It is a 20-year warranty. It's a typical warranty for a duralast product.
Thank you.
There've been some minor issues that have been corrected. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Settlemeyer. Go ahead. No. You go first.
I'll make the motion we approve the change order for Maiden Middle School roof replacement. The mentioned sum of $704,465.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you. A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of change order for the Maiden Middle School roof replacement, signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item three is the approval of purchased playground equipment for Maiden Elementary School.
Yes, Chairman Taylor, members of the board, Dr. Stover, this is a proposal by Superior Recreational Products. We've worked with this entity before through the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative. We will use construction funds for this project, a rather large piece of playground equipment in the amount of $97,679.89. There is warranties throughout different parts of this play structure, depending upon what they are, whether they be shades, or pipes, or fittings, or coatings. Some are lifetime, some have 20 years, 15 years, 10 years, dependent upon what the product is made of. And I'll be happy to read those, share those with you, if you would like, but we have worked with this company before, and we're very pleased with the products that they provide. So I would seek your approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, you've heard Mr. Moore's request, and I erroneously identified that as item number three. It's actually item number five on that, of this section of the agenda, but is there, are there questions?
It's gonna go up where the, the old middle school, here we go.
That's a rendering of it. I'm, I'm not touching anything, Marty, because every time I do it, it goes, that will be on the upper part of the playground. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is the rendering.
Are there other questions? I'll entertain motions.
I'll make a motion we approve the playground equipment for Maiden Elementary School, $97,679.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the playground equipment for Maiden Elementary, signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
And now, approval of proposals from the train company. So, Mr. Moore?
We have, do, do we have a playground surface?
Excuse me, sir, I skipped item six, low bidder for the playground resurfacing at Star Town.
Yes, sir.
Item number six.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. Members of the board, we have a proposal from Creative Playscapes in the amount of $60,410-plus tax to create a rubberized surface on the cat, on the playground nearer to the gym and the cafeteria. The need for that is because of the constant loss of mulch into our drainage system. Water goes down the hallway at the gym and into the cafeteria. It's been an ongoing problem for years. I'm sure Ms. Jordan can attest to that, and this is a way that we will finally be able to resolve this issue. We have used this company before in another surface project, and we've been very pleased. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Mr. Moore, where will the funds for this come from?
They will come from capital outlay. We've actually had that within our budget.
Hearing none, I will entertain motions relative to item six, playground resurfacing at Star Town Elementary.
I make a motion that we accept this proposal.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the playground resurfacing at Star Town, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, item seven, the proposal from Train Company.
Yes, Chairman Taylor, members of the board, we have a proposal, a chiller service agreement from Train. We have entered into an agreement with Train many years previous. This is to establish by annual service of all the chillers in the Catawba County school system. There are 39 chillers of varying ages. They make sure that they keep them in good running order, and also puts us in priority order. Should we have a problem, they will come out immediately. And last year, at the start of the year, we lost a couple of phases at a couple of schools. We had power issues. They came immediately and made that a priority. So as I say, we've done this before. We've been very pleased with their service and responsiveness. The amount of the agreement is $42,420-plus tax, and it is from local funds contracted services, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions about the proposal from the Train Company?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hearing no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the service proposals from the Train Company for the chiller service agreement.
I will second.
Time for both of them?
I think just the...
I can go ahead. The second proposal I can discuss as well. I, I didn't realize and forgot that Debbie had put them together. That's my fault. I apologize. I should've kept rolling, so, if I may.
Yeah, let's, uh, Wilson, let's hear Mr. Moore's proposal, and again, I apologize for getting my car in front of the horse.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. We got into a good flow there, and I just wanted to keep it going. This also is from the Train Company, and this is a prepaid block of hours that we would purchase for our HVAC management software. Last year, we bought 42 hours, and those hours were exhausted. Again, this would, this would help to service all of the software that we have within our school buildings that control our HVAC system. We would like to increase that block of hours to 60. We did that last year as well. The amount is $35,906-plus tax. It would... It would basically allow for technicians to help us focus on problem issues with our chillers to make repairs. This also is from local funds and contracted services, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And, Ms. Moore, just to be clear, we're gonna entertain motions jointly for both of those requests.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, again, board members, I know we made motions earlier, but now that the second proposal has been added, I would ask for a motion to include both items.
I would amend that motion to include the chiller service agreement and the service base fee for the software with Train.
Thank you.
I second.
So we have Dr. Barnett's motion there, and Ms. Teague's second to approve the Train proposal. All in favor of those motions, signify by raising your hand, and thank you, that is unanimous. We have, at the start of the meeting, removed item number eight, and that will be brought to us on our November meeting. Couple of items that in our work session today we need attention to before we can present that for final approval. And then that brings us to item nine, which is approval of the proposed amendments to the Board of Education policies, and I'll recognize attorney Crystal Davis.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as you recall, this afternoon, I presented to you amendments to the policies that are set forth on new business number nine relating to the two twenty-twenty-four Title IX regulations and the twenty-twenty Title IX regulations. As you recall, we have, the board has decided in the past to split and have two different sets of Title IX policies, one which has a notice and disclaimer at the top of each that relate to and apply to schools in Catawba County school system against which the U.S. Department of Education is not enjoined from enforcing its twenty-twenty-four Title IX regulations. Those are labeled as twenty-twenty-four policies, and the others are the policies that apply to schools in Catawba County against which the U.S. Department of Education is enjoined from enforcing its twenty-twenty-four Title IX regulations, and those are labeled as twenty-twenty Title IX policies. There is a, one policy that is a brand-new policy, one-point-seven-one-four-zero. This is the second reading. Last month was the first reading of that, and I'm asking, based on the fact that we need to make some adjustments after this is approved in the context of the website for our board policies, I'm asking for approval of all of these proposed policy amendments and one-point-seven-one-four-zero as a new policy, and I'm also asking for authorization to change the policy numbers within the body of those board policies for cross-references, cross-reference purposes. So that said, we would, I would ask for a motion to that effect.
All right, board members, we heard Ms. Davis' presentation earlier this morning, this afternoon, actually. And so at this time, any questions? I will then entertain any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the proposed amendments to the Title IX. I know we discussed many different changes to it, but we have to move forward with what we have here, and I make the motion that we approve those.
And also, I'm asking for authority to...
Create the section on the website.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. The motion was, the request was that they be approved as a block, and the motion was to that effect.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I would ask all those in favor of the motion to approve the six items and also to give our attorney the latitude to renumber as needed for cross-referencing, signify by raising your hand if you approve. That is Mr. Abernathy, Dr. Barnett, Ms. Richards, and Mr. Taylor. All those opposed? Settlemeyer, Mr. Sigmund, and Ms. Teague.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That concludes our open session items. We do have need for closed session for personnel items, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our open session and go into closed session.
Motion that we go out of open session and go into closed session.
I'll second.
That was Ms. Richards with the motion, Mr. Sigmund with the second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand, and that is unanimous. We will convene in closed session in five minutes.